I am going to call to order this evening's meeting of the Hudson Board of Education. It's Tuesday, October 11th. Please stand as you're able and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board members, you have tonight's agenda in front of you. If there is someone who would be willing to make a motion to approve that agenda?
So move.
Motion by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on item four of the agenda, which is recognition, and we had hoped to be able to recognize students that are part of the High School Musical this year. Sandy, I'm not certain any of them were able to join us this evening.
Correct. They are in the midst of rehearsals and had hoped to join us, and if, obviously, if they do, we'll stop and make time for them. But we'll at least make the announcement that our High School Musical this year is A Christmas Carol, the musical, and it takes place on November 11th, 12th, and 13th, as well as November 18th, 19th, and 20th, with two performances on November 19th. And we obviously encourage all of our community to purchase tickets starting in the 17th and enjoy what is traditionally a outstanding production.
All right, so Sandy, you'll keep running down the agenda here in recognition.
All right. Next, we're going to recognize this evening our Hudson area backpack program, and I know we have some of our volunteers here this evening, so if they'll join Barb, if you and your team will come up to the microphone, that would be great. The Hudson Backpack Program started four years ago by the Hudson Area Ministerial Association, and it started out just working with EP Rock, but by 2010-11, each of the public and private elementary schools in the district are now partnered with a church. Everyone who works for the Backpack Program is a volunteer. The program has no administrative costs. The backpacks are donated, food is donated, and the funds for the vouchers are donated. It's an absolutely wonderful program. So Barb, if you want to share a few of the highlights of the program over the past few years?
Well, you kind of covered it, but I've been with the program since the beginning. It started out with this, two of our churches in EP Rock, and it's just been wonderful to watch it in the four years, how we've drawn in other churches and organizations for donations, and now that we are able to involve all the elementary schools and the nursery schools. And one of our main goals this year is, once a month, we hand out a voucher. The backpacks are given out twice a month, every two weeks, but once a month, we hand out a voucher for bread, milk, and eggs. And this year, we're hoping to increase our funds and be able to hand out the voucher at least twice a month with both backpack things, so.
And who's with you this evening?
We have Jan, who's our coordinator, and Marion Schultz, who works with, I don't know which.
I know it's Jan, that fourth street.
Okay.
Willow River.
With, yeah. And Jan came on a year ago because we were kind of, all of our churches, everybody was trying to hold it together, and she was so wonderful and volunteered to be our coordinator and really help us with our communication and keep everything together, so.
And just to realize the size, if you look at the bullets up on the screen, approximately 110 families were served twice a month, 1,650 backpacks were delivered in that nine-month period, and then you can see the vouchers, 825 for bread, milk, and eggs, and then the dollar amounts of the vouchers that are donated in the community. It's just an amazing program, and we thank you so deeply. And many of our building administrators are behind you this evening, and I know they want to thank you from the deepest parts of their hearts because it just helps some very needy families in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'm going to ask Veronica Ellingson to step forward. Veronica is a science teacher at Hudson High School, and you can see on your screen, she is not in Hudson.
No.
She received an award through the NEA, the National Education Association, and as part of that award, she was sent to China as part of an educational experience. And so Veronica, why don't you share some of the highlights of the award in your trip?
Part of it is that we did get a course, in a crash course, I would say, in 4,000 years of Chinese culture and history before we went, and there were 50 award winners, one from each state, and with the time commitment, 26 of us got to go. So just being with that group of educators, wonderful educators from around the United States was incredible. First, we went to Beijing, and at Beijing, we went to a kind of a technical school. We were supposed to see a high school, but the day before, the government said we couldn't go, so we ended up getting to a same level, high school, ninth through 12th grade, in Beijing, saw the sights there, got to go to the Great Wall, Forbidden City, those types of things. Then we went to Shanghai, saw a middle school, a very advanced middle school. They got to get around the national standards and did very innovative things, a lot of things that we're doing in Hudson. So it was great to see that. And we saw the sights in Shanghai, just incredible how much building has gone on in the last 15 years. And then we went to Hong Kong for our last stop, and we saw an elementary school there. So it was just incredible. Definitely the highlights were the school visits, the Great Wall, and getting up early in the morning and just going to the parks and seeing everybody doing Tai Chi and kind of jumping in and joining them, and they're very happy to show us and teach us. So thank you very much.
All right. We're very proud of Veronica and her award, and we thank you for sharing that international experience because I'm sure you've brought that to your classroom as well, and perhaps have made some connections now for Hudson High School. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And next, we're going to ask Craig Gillick to step forward. Craig is a physical education teacher at Hudson High School, and just in the past, I think at the end of September, so just in the past few weeks, he was inducted into the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire Hall of Fame. There were seven athletes that were inducted, and I, what, Wisconsin Eau Claire Blue Golds, right? And Craig, I didn't know this before, was a baseball and football player for Eau Claire. And the Blue Gold Hall of Fame was established in 1973, and Craig was recognized then on Saturday, September 24th. He played for Glenwood City High School, where he was all-state in football, basketball, and baseball, and also set most of the Blue Gold career offensive records while at Eau Claire. So am I missing some other high points of your career there?
Whatever else they lied about.
And Craig has been in the Hudson School District since 1997, and he served four years as the varsity baseball coach after one year as an assistant, and he was also our football head coach for three years after three years as an assistant. So again, very proud of our accomplishments of our staff, and we say congratulations.
Thank you very much for having me here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We are on item five of the agenda, which is the Superintendent's Report. I will turn it over to Mary for her two items.
Madam President, thank you. I'm going to first focus on our district resident enrollment. So these are students who live in the Hudson School District, certainly the largest portion of all students in our schools, early childhood through grade 12. And this is a comparison of the official count in September from last year, 2010, to September of 2011. And if we look, focus first on the elementary, you can see our schools listed there, and I'd just like to talk a little bit about the capacity of a couple of those schools that have asterisks by the capacity number. First would be Holton, and Holton having a capacity of 294 students. And what I would call that a limited capacity, it has classroom space if we filled every seat in the school for 294 students. What it doesn't have is the common areas that support that classroom space. So if we were really at 294 students at Holton, we would not have the space in our gym, in our special ed rooms, in the media center, and so forth. So that would be something that we would need to address. Moving on to Hudson Prairie, it has a capacity, or has had a capacity in the past, of 588. And just so it's not confusing to our community, we haven't changed that capacity, but we're using that school to support the middle school. So three classrooms in Hudson Prairie are no longer serving kindergarten through fifth grade students, they're serving middle school students. And so if we looked at that capacity and took about 75 students away, the capacity would really be closer to 513. If we restored the capacity, certainly it would be, or restored those classrooms, it would be back to 588. So we just need to keep that in mind. When we go to the elementary total capacity with that caveat for Hudson Prairie and reducing by 75 than our total capacity at the elementary level, using every seat in every school would be 2,865. And again, our capacity is a very full capacity, and it assumes that we have the same number of students at every grade level to fill the school, which we know isn't the case. Looking at the elementary totals and moving across the page, comparing it from last year to this year, we have a slight decrease of 12 students. That's really about the same if we looked at the total number of students being 2,566 students. It's a little misleading to look at the changes over in the right-hand column for elementary. For example, at EP Rock, it has two grade levels that are capped, and capped means that they're essentially closed. They are over our class-size guidelines. In kindergarten, that's 18 to 22 students, and in fifth grade, it's 22 to 27 students. So all of the sections in those two grade levels are over the guidelines, and as a result, we're moving students to Willow River. Therefore, really, it's probably not 10 less students, they're just placed someplace else in the district. Hudson Prairie has their fifth grade classrooms capped, so they're moving students to North Hudson, and River Crest has kindergarten capped and moving students to Willow River. Again, we're using the space that we have and the available seats to serve our students and support their learning. If we look at the middle school, I talked about both the middle school and the high school at our special meeting that focused on space for learning at the secondary level. We have had a very significant growth of 53 students at the middle school. That reflects over a 4% increase this year, and with the 2.5% increase we had in our student enrollment in the middle school last year, it's very significant. And knowing that we're already 169 students over capacity at the middle school, I know that's very significant for the middle school staff to serve students, and they are continuing to try to be very creative with space, but we're running out of options there. We presently have 13 teachers on carts, and we'll move that to 14 at trimester when we add another teacher. At the high school level, basically, that population from last year is almost the same. It's six students less, but with those numbers, it's really a stable population. We, looking, looking at the projections for enrollment, we reach capacity by those projections from Dr. Hazel Reinhardt next year. So our district totals overall, early childhood through 12th grade, is an increase of 35 students. That is a little under 1%, it's a 0.6%, but certainly in these times, many districts in the state would be very, very happy to have those additional students. And in Hudson, our challenge is the space for those students that we continue to talk about. So move on to the next page, which is our enrollment count for state aid, unless there's some questions on this page. Okay, so we'll move to the next page. And again, this, this data is really the data that shows our membership count for state aid. So it includes all of the students in the previous page and then adds a few other categories into that, like open enrollment. And speaking of open enrollment, as we look at those students that go out of our district to another district and come back in, it's an equal match of 33 students, Hudson students going to other schools, and 33 students coming into the district. That's a mandated program, and we talk about that throughout the year at the time of open enrollment registration and consideration by the Board of Education, based on the state requirements. One of the ways that I have looked at, or a different way this time that I've looked at enrollments, I looked at the average class size of each of our kindergarten through 12th grade classes. This is the first time in history that we have every one but two of those classes at 400 or more, and the two that are under 400 are just under. So third grade is 397 students, and ninth grade is 398 students. And so I wanted to look at the average of the elementary classes. So if I looked at kindergarten through fifth grade and the total for each of those classes, the average is 421 students in those six classes. If I move to the middle school, the average for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes is 431. And then if I go to the high school, ninth through 12th grades, the average class size is there, and I'm talking about the entire class, not the teacher-to-student ratio in a class, is 409 students. And you can see if you look at this over time and include the growth that we have from sixth grade, fifth grade to sixth grade, and from eighth grade to ninth grade, that we have growth within our system, students who are already here. So our kindergarten through fifth grade average is 421, and we know that group of students, our history is they will grow from fifth grade to sixth grade, they will also grow when they go from eighth grade to ninth grade. So 421 is the low, and it will continue to get higher. If we go sixth to eighth grade, that class size right now has already grown, it's 431. And we know that by the time those students reach ninth grade, again, they will grow, and that's compared to the students in high school, the average is 409. So you can see we have growth within our system as we just move those students forward. And if there's any questions, I'll move on to the next topic.
Go ahead.
All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about our movement background information about our County Road UU site that the district currently owns. And you can see a map of that displayed for everyone to see. The white areas on that map are essentially the areas that are usable for a school site. And you'll remember, board members, that we had a report to the Board of Education, a preliminary site evaluation in January of 2011 about the County UU site and using it as a school site. Little background, the 23-acre parcel that is bordered by Crosby Drive and is right across from the Field of Dreams soccer fields was purchased in 1959. The larger portion, the 87-acre parcel that is right on County Road UU, was purchased in 2001. So the site itself is approximately 110 total acres. And our intention, or the district's intention when it was purchased, to have this be a site for a future secondary school, and secondary meaning middle school, high school, serving students there in some kind of configuration. At the time of that purchase in 2001, the district never anticipated the number of students that we looked to have in schools, our projections show, in the next 10 years. In fact, since 2001, our growth has been at 28%. Certainly, that's a very, very significant growth, and if we move that forward, again, at the time when that, the last purchase was made in 2001, there was no idea of how large, how many students we would have in the Hudson School District and how many we could project to come to our schools in the future. The district also may have anticipated that the property would someday be annexed to the city, and the city could provide access to public utilities. That has not been the case, and as a result, when we had the preliminary site evaluation done, it was determined that a large secondary school on the site wasn't possible because there was no way to treat the wastewater on the site. It didn't have any access to public utilities that you would get from the city, and again, annexation is not possible, it's not contiguous with the city of Hudson. The size and the topography of the site do not allow for an onsite wastewater treatment facility, which would be required since we didn't have access to public utilities. And after that, therefore, the Board of Education directed the administration to identify a property for a future school site that had this criteria. First, the size of the parcel had to address our future growth needs for the district's growing student enrollment. The parcel was preferably in the city of Hudson because it would have access to public utilities and be in a central location for transportation, and there would be inaccessible with road infrastructure around the site so that it supported access from all corners of the district. So at last week's special meeting, the Board of Education approved an offer to purchase the St. Croix Meadows Dog Track, which met this criteria and is contingent on passage of a referendum. So the question is, what is the plan for the UU property if there's passage of a referendum? The Dog Track essentially replaces the UU property as a site for a future secondary school. I want to say that one more time. The Board thought of the Dog Track as replacing the UU property as a site for a secondary school. And this is part of that plan to address the lack of middle school or enough, middle school and high school space for learning. Therefore, with the passage of a referendum, the UU property as a site for a future secondary school, the Board would plans to put that property, at least the 87 acres site, the larger part of that parcel, up for sale at a time when prices, the market has rebounded, and that makes sense, and it's worthwhile for our taxpayers. The Board may decide at that time that the smaller parcel, the 23 acres, they will consider whether it should be reserved for an elementary school site to address growth at the elementary level in the future. And again, that's a decision to come, but the intention of the Board and the district has always been that the Dog Track replaces the UU site when we think of the plan for the future to address growth at the secondary level, and that the 87 acres would be put up for sale, and then there's a decision to be made about the 23 acres at that time as we continue to monitor growth in the district. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
All right, thank you, Mary. Which is a nice segue to the next item on the agenda under reports. Tim, you're going to give us an update on the feasibility of the St. Croix Meadows as a school site.
Right. We've got Mark Bulkey from Hoffman here tonight. Mark is a land architect and a land planner with Hoffman, and we worked with Mark, and Mark put together a preliminary site evaluation for St. Croix Meadows. And so, Mark, I'm going to have you come up, come up to the table here. And Mark is going to walk you through some of the highlights of the report and answer any questions that you have.
Okay, Mark, and if you could just make sure the button is up on that microphone and it's nice and close so we can hear you.
Okay.
You can actually pull it much closer.
Is that okay?
That's better.
Thank you. It's good to be back again. A lot of familiar faces. As Tim said, we were asked to look at the St. Croix Meadows site, and similar to the site evaluation that Mary referenced, do a similar study for this site, and the results were quite different. I hope you all had a chance to review it. Basically, when we do this, we, as we did on the previous study, we set up criteria, certain criteria at a high level. We're looking at this at a high level right now, not the details, but just to see if there's any red flags that we see that would cause us concern with the site. And basically, we were asked to look at this for secondary, secondary school to serve the middle or high school students in the future. Everything in this report is based on existing information, so there was really no new information generated. We visited the site, we did walk through the building, we looked at the county and city websites, had some discussions with the, with the city, and several meetings with the, with school district. And so that's really the basis for this information. At the end of the report, you'll notice that there were some recommendations of additional study that we can do to verify some of the findings. So there's, there's things that can continue to be done, but in general, everything was very favorable. So the criteria that we look at, again, at this high level, have to do with usable area, access, utilities, and site development costs. So you can look at those and compare those to other sites and see how they measure up on this site. So in the beginning of the report, I, there was a brief definition of the, of the criteria. I'm not going to read this because it's, those are pretty understandable. And then as far as the site analysis itself, we looked at each of those criteria. This site is approximately 126 acres, so as far as usable area, it, because of some of the restrictions on site, there's some steep slopes on the east side with some woods. There is an existing pond, a stormwater pond that is owned and, not owned, but maintained by the city, and they have an easement in the southwest corner, so that, that restricts some of the property. There are some potential wetlands. We did do a wetland determination, which we just had someone go out that is familiar with wetlands and take a look to make sure that, that we understood the scale of what those wetlands might be. There are some minor areas of wetland which would restrict the site, but we calculated the, the usable acreage as 85 to 90 acres. For, for a large secondary school, we would typically recommend a minimum of 65 to 75 acres for that, and 65 to 75 will typically get you a good-sized site that would accommodate a large secondary school, but it may not offer all the flexibility and future expansion capabilities that you, you may desire. So, so we do exceed the 65 to 75, which is great. So as far as usable acreage, I would definitely give this site an A. There's a lot of flat area. It's been previously developed, so you know there's probably not concerns. We didn't see any major structural concerns with the building, so in seeing that, that takes away a lot of the concerns about soil conditions and things like that. Access, the site is centrally located within the district, which is great. You've got a major arterial next to it, which is always a great opportunity, or a need, I should say, for, for this type of school that could generate that, as much traffic as, as, as it could. as, as, as it could. So being on Carmichael is great. You've got great access to the south on County Road F. And then as far as, I've, I've never evaluated a site that had on and off ramps existing for a school, for a school site, but, so that's pretty interesting. But because of the previous use, there are, there's some definite benefits. And one of those would be it was set up to carry a lot of traffic in and out of the site. And so those, those ramps add a lot of value, in my opinion. One, one minor issue drawback as far as accessibility is that the ramps were set up to bring traffic into the site from the north and have it exit to the north. So there, there would be, and there's plenty of land area and there's plenty of frontage on F where it may be desirable to, there's an existing driveway there right now, but it's a very minor driveway. But that one could be improved and that would allow for more traffic to go south from the site because the existing ramp system doesn't allow for traffic to, to get back onto Carmichael going south. The next criteria was utility service. Again, because of the existing use, not only are there public utilities to the site, but there is substantial infrastructure on the site. And hopefully, at, at some point, when this is developed for future school use, that infrastructure would, you could get the value out of that infrastructure. There is, there, I, we haven't verified the exact locations and sizes, but I know there's a fire hydrant system throughout the whole site. So there's got to be major water lines. There's, there's a sprinkler system in the existing building, which means there's probably a very major water line to the, to the existing building on site. And there is a stormwater sewer system on the entire site, underground right now, that, that directs water to the pond in the southwest corner. So, and sanitary sewer also. There would be a sanitary lateral to the existing building and there is potential that, for reuse of that. So the, what's underneath that site could add a lot of value as, as it's developed in the future also. As far as site development costs, again, there's a, a very large, flat area there. There, there would be some demolition. How we define that, I, I don't know at this point. We certainly see some value in the existing building and maybe being able to reuse some of the structure of that building, but we haven't gone to any detailed study of that. But there certainly would have to be some deconstruction or demolition of some of the minor buildings and some of the pavement areas. I think I calculated there's over 3,000 parking stalls on that site. I don't think you'd need that many. So there's, there's opportunities to, to look at reuse of the pavement for fill on site or if there's other projects that would need fill in the area. There's, there's value in that also. As far as the development cost too, I, I mentioned the ramp system already. That, I think, would, would help with preliminary or initial site development costs for, for any school facility on the site. And as far as other criteria, some of the other things that I mentioned in here, there are some, some things that would need to be accomplished on this site, as it would with many sites when you're looking at a special use like a school on a site. The, the site is zoned commercial right now and so rezoning would be necessary. The land, the city land use plan identifies it as commercial so that, there would be some, a city process to go through for some, for those approvals prior to, prior to a school development being, being approved. As far as the surrounding land use, I think this is also a, a positive. You're close to River, River Crest right here. We're just north of this, this site. So there's an opportunity to create a good relationship there. There's a quarry to the east, but the future land use plan shows that quarry as a park. You know, whether that's five years or 25 years from now, at least that potential is there, that, that, that will be parkland. And then you, a lot of the land to the west is Camp St. Croix owns, owns that land. And then the land, there's some residential to the south is some higher, or lower density residential and to the north, a little bit higher density residential across Carmichael. But to have a site with those surrounding land uses and still have the infrastructure and the road network to move in and out of the site, I think is, makes this a pretty unique, unique opportunity. I think if you look at, on page four, the positive and negative attributes, and in the conclusions, I, I put the word significant because I think when you look at this, I rarely run into sites where this, the positives are so significant compared to the negatives. But because of the, the size of the site, the topography of the site, the, the previous development, which adds, has some of those, those things that I already mentioned, I would call this a significant, that the attributes, positive attributes are numerous and significant. And again, most of these I've already, I've already touched on. But I think it's, it's really important, there's three main things that kind of are the theme throughout this thing. It's accessibility, the central location, the accessibility. And by that too, there's a bike and walking trail that meets the site from the north. So that's existing. That's another, another great opportunity. So accessibility vehicular wise, central location, the, the utility infrastructure that I mentioned. And then the other thing is this would offer a lot of future opportunity because of the, the land area and location. I think it would, it would offer you opportunity for expansion. It would offer a lot of design flexibility. And with that design flexibility, it, it comes into play the, the opportunities for sustainable design. There'd be plenty of flexibility for solar orientation, for maximum stormwater management opportunities. And another thing is the reuse of existing facilities. If we can reuse some of the building, if we can reuse some of the, the pavement on site, those are, are good, sustainable attributes of, of this site. So I think as far as the, the negatives, I, I mentioned those already too. There's some demolition that would have to be done. There's some approvals that would be necessary to develop this for a school site. And the site, I guess there's some tax, it's a taxable property now. If the school district takes over, it would be tax exempt. So those are really the only things I could, I could, could come up with as far as negatives. And I, I think those are, could be more like challenges than necessarily negatives and not uncommon on most sites. So the conclusion again was that we felt this was an excellent site for all the reasons that were mentioned here. And I've looked at a lot of sites and this is really an excellent site. I think it'd be a great opportunity for the school district for the future.
Thank you, Mark.
And I'd be, answer any questions?
Yes. So Board members, other questions? Tom, I'll start with you.
Mark, when we talk about it being centrally located, we're talking about that in terms of population base or are we talking about that geographically, imagined population base?
Yeah, I think so. Mainly within the district. I mean, when you look at the district, I think it's, the location is great and then you've got to look at the, the road infrastructure to get there too. I mean, you don't have to go far north to go east-west on a, on a, on a major road like Hanley. And then you go farther north and you've got the, the interstate.
Yeah. What I'm referring to is when I think about the location of this property, it's really kind of positioned more toward the south of the district geographically.
Right, right. And, and I think, I guess if you look on a, on a plan, you know, it may be south, but I think when you look at the overall district and the land availability and the public utility opportunities for a parcel this size for future, I, I think it's as central as you're probably going to get. And again, I think the roads make it more central too.
It makes sense to me from a population standpoint, where the density of the population is probably, makes it a central location. And I'm only saying that, you know, based on my assumptions from, I'm assuming that that's accurate.
Well, if I could jump in there. You know, usually when a district is this time in their development as a district, being in existence in a community that's in this state of development, when you're looking for a site, the size that we're looking for, it is usually at the outskirts of a district. And so generally, there aren't public utilities, there are, the road structure, infrastructure needs to, is not substantial. And accessibility becomes a greater issue at that time. So when you're looking to build a school, a large school, it's usually at the outskirts and you have ongoing significant transportation costs as well as development costs, that this location is much more central than that kind of location. I think that's another way to think about it.
I, from experience, the high schools and middle schools that we've worked on over the years and more recently are exactly that. They're, there's challenges with getting to the site. There's usually major, substantial road improvements. And infrastructure is, can be extremely costly. I can think of one we did where we had to extend the, the infrastructure, the water and sewer, I think about a quarter to a half mile at substantial cost. And then we had to put in turn, a lot of turn lanes and, I mean, some of the things, I mean, we had to deal with some of that here at, at River Crest. And I think you, you could avoid a lot of those costs there and.
Other questions? Dan?
Thank you. I'm just looking at the information about, I guess my question has to do with if we were to expand this site to the maximum 2,500 students where you indicate the site requires at least 65 to 75 acres. So if we were to say 75 acres and further on, you indicate that the usable acreage is 85 to 90 acres. I guess what I'm trying to figure out in my mind is, are we talking pretty much this facility would require that much space or are you taking into account parking needs and recreational areas or can you sort of explain that a little bit?
That, that's based on, I guess, to, a, a standard that would include a, a, a building to teach or to accommodate that many students. Parking for, in this case, the, the worst case would be a high school. If, if you, if that was what ended up there, you would want enough parking for that. Obviously, like I said, there's much more than you, you would need on that site right And then the athletic facilities. And one of the reasons we look at that is there's, there's, you know, we've worked on some examples where schools, we built new schools on, on sites that were at that acreage or less and believe it or not, they wish they had more because there's always, there's always a need. I've never worked with a school district that didn't, they, they were either very grateful that they had the land when they needed it or they, they really, they were so boxed in that they, they had no, no choice. So I guess what I'm saying is this, this would offer you the, the flexibility to do what you want to do, whether it be a middle school, a high school, athletic facility. It would allow you to do all of that. And the, the acreage above the 65 to 75, I'm thinking of a school, the high school, one of the high schools near where I live. They have, I think, 65 acres and they're less than 2,000 students and they wish they would have acquired a little bit more. And then things like stormwater management, rules are changing constantly. And there's some positives in having that extra acres to do sustainable design as we did on this site. You took, there's a lot of land devoted to stormwater management, but that's a good thing. So I, I think there's, there's opportunities to, to do things like that. And I mentioned the, the expansion. Who knows what the future holds? If this is going to be a district site for 50 to 100 years, you know, it would give you that flexibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Thanks, Mark. Mark, one of the questions I always get a lot is, is about the existing building and my own personal curiosity as well. And you touched on it a little bit before, but how would you characterize the general overall condition of the, of the main building? And as a follow-up to that, what do you think the likelihood is of the district being able to utilize any portion of that main building?
Well, we haven't, I think that's probably the next step would be to take a closer look at that. We haven't had, we've looked at it in the big picture, but I guess I'm, I'm afraid to get into that too much. What we have determined is that, you know, the structure of the building is good. And we feel there is value in reuse of some part of that building. Now, it may be just the structure. I, I don't know. I mean, it's obviously, it's a 20-year-old building. It's been sitting vacant for 10 years. So there, there are some things that, that would be problems that would need to be corrected just because it's, it hasn't been well maintained. But the structure is good. And there was, we didn't see any obvious structural problems. So we feel there's, there's some value in, in reuse of it.
When you, when you say about some, you know, possible limited reuse of some portion of that building, are you talking about, you know, building materials or would there actually be some, you know, floors, walls and ceilings that might actually be?
Well, when I say structure, I think what we've looked at is just the, the structure itself, part of that structure could be maintained. And what was done with it, I don't know, but you could, you could, there is some value in the, in the structure itself. Am I answering your question?
You know, it does. And I realize, I'm kind of putting you in a spot. It's kind of a more in-depth, in-depth question.
Yeah. I mean, that's really the next level. I mean, you know, to, to look at, at what specifically, specifically could be done with it, with the structure itself.
Excuse me. I haven't been in that building for a very long time, but it is, it is something that always comes up about, I mean, some people think, geez, a little retrofit here and there, we have a school and that, you know. My recollection is that would, I think, be quite a challenge. The building certainly wasn't set up for a school. So I always, in my, it's my personal opinion, view that as being very little, it may be salvageable.
Yeah. I mean, the way it's, the way the column spacing is, the way the wall, you know, it's got big open spaces. There's a, a tiered area overlooking the track and, you know, whether those could all be used and, and make sense for a, for a school would have to be evaluated.
And just a couple more minor ones here. It's zoned commercially right now. What, what would the, what zoning classification would we need to the school up there? What is that term?
Um, I believe in Hudson, it's institutional. I forget what we zoned here.
Yeah, it's institutional or public.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what we, we, that's what this property was rezoned to when, when you began the process here.
Okay. And you, I'm taking to perceive that to be just routine, correct?
Um, I'm not going to touch that one. Every city is different. You know, there are some, I mean, that's a, that's a city decision. I, I think, I think when you look at the, for the good of the community and good of the school district, I think this is an excellent site. So hopefully that would carry some weight. But I, I can't guess what the city would do.
I mean, I guess, maybe what I meant is there, there certainly would be no obvious barriers to any rezoning. Was that, I'm putting you in the spot again?
My opinion, no. But I'm one opinion.
Okay. All right. And just last item either, geotechnical report. Can you tell me what that is? I don't know what that is.
Uh, soils report. Soil, soil borings and then it, to test the structural capabilities of the soil. In this case, again, we feel pretty confident that since there's been pavement in the building there for many years, that, that's probably good, but we don't do any, we would never proceed without recommending that you get some additional soil testing in some of the areas that aren't developed especially. that you get some additional soil testing in some of the areas that aren't developed, especially.
Thank you.
Mark, I have one final question for you. I was looking at one of the, the drawings of the site. And when you mentioned wetlands, can you just point out where we think there might be potential wetlands and we'll have to do more investigation? Where would that exist on the site?
This, this was a, a wetland determination, which is different than a delineation. A delineation is a very detailed, mapped-out wetland report.
That's Exhibit C, I'm sorry, just so everybody knows, Exhibit C.
Yep.
This was a determination, we, we had an, an expert go out and just walk it, give us an opinion and determine whether he felt there was wetlands. The areas in blue, he felt were, were potential wetland areas.
So right in the middle of the track?
In the middle of the track. Now, there are some circumstances that, that can be treated differently sometimes because it's a man-made feature. That was not there naturally, that was a feature built as part of the dog track. So sometimes there's more leniency as far as being able to fill or mitigate, maybe create some other wetlands and, and fill that area. So I think there'd be some opportunity to do that. And it's not so restricted that you couldn't work around it. It's a pretty isolated little area. And then the area to the south is really, is the pond area. And then there's a drainage way that leads to that pond that is that long lineal area. And then the yellow areas are depressions, but as he put on there, non-wetland, he didn't feel those were wetlands.
Right, thank you.
And a delineation would verify all that.
Are there any other questions? So I know Mary has mentioned it, I think, Mark, you did as well, but I think it bears repeating that as the school board understood the limitations that existed with the UU property, and also was wrestling with what was our next step to secure some land for 612 space. We had three objectives, I think. One was to make sure that we found property that was in the city and so therefore had access to city utilities. One was that it was accessible, knowing the traffic that the property would have to handle. And the third was that it was going to meet the, the size requirements to handle the student body that we're likely talking about. And so with those criteria, you know, this particular property, property is perhaps the, certainly one of the few and perhaps even the only piece of property that met those criteria. And I think, you know, I only speak for myself, grateful that we've gotten to this point and have had this option presented to us because it certainly seems to fit what it was that we were looking for. So thank you for your report, thank you for the work, and thank you to the administration as well.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just, since we have this, this diagram up, I'd like to point out, one of the advantages that I think this site has as well is it really has a buffer zone between where a school would be located on the site and the neighborhoods that are around that site, which I think is a, is a very nice advantage. And also, as you know, one of our graduate learner outcomes is environmental sustainability. There are opportunities on this site to have learning experience, outdoor learning experiences for our students as we do in our school forests throughout the district. And each of our schools has an outdoor learning site. So this piece of property is very advantageous for that as well.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mark. And if there are no other questions, then I think we will invite Mr. Grambo to join us, to walk us through the SMART goals for the next year. Have a good evening. All right, Ms. Love and Mr. Coke joining Mr. Grambo.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to share our 2011, 2012 SMART goals at the elementary, middle, and high school level. Seems like it was just, just a few days ago that we were sharing the results of the 2010, 2011 SMART goals. So it's a nice opportunity to be able to share what we have upcoming for the year. As we share these learning-focused goals that we have, one thing that I want to mention before we start is that the focus of our presentation tonight will be on the concept of multiple measures. And we'll be exploring that concept and how it connects directly to the SMART goal process. So you can see a quote there that helps define what we mean by multiple measures. So really essentially, multiple measures in an educational setting refers to the process of gathering enough data to sufficiently inform the decisions that we need to make when we're working toward our priorities or our standards. It, it just follows the logic that we shouldn't have one way to measure something if we feel that it is very important. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about three types of multiple measures. And this was new learning for many of us. This summer, we got together as an administrative leadership team and we explored the concept a little bit of multiple measures. And, and learned that, that term is used in several different ways, but they all have direct applicability to the educational setting. So the first idea, measures of different educational goals. This simply means if we're talking about measuring progress, student learning progress toward an important goal, we may have multiple aspects that we use to gauge success toward that goal. An example of that might be student success being gauged by reading proficiency and mathematical proficiency, not a single measure, but multiple measures in that aspect. The second type of multiple measures refers to different measures of the same educational goal. In this case, this is, most of the examples you'll be hearing about today really follow this example of multiple measures. Not that they don't all exist in the other styles, but what we're talking about here is taking an important goal and having a primary measure, but then having other ways we can also measure to verify the validity of the first measure. And then finally, the multiple, multiple opportunities to meet benchmark on the same assessment. So what this might mean is we have a certain assessment to measure a very important goal. A student may have multiple opportunities to take a slight variation of that same assessment to prove that they are indeed reaching that benchmark. Or it may mean multiple pathways, maybe a written test, maybe a performance assessment, but different ways to demonstrate that they indeed have gained mastery of that goal. Now, the guiding principles for multiple measures, and these are incredibly important. And therein red, know your purpose. It's absolutely essential that we know the purpose of the measures that, or the goals that we're measuring. And you see that idea, that statement there, why do we need to know it? And that's something that all educators are used to hearing from students. Well, why do I need to know this? Well, it's just as important that all the adults in an educational setting know the answer to that question. And if we do indeed understand why it is important, we need to place enough emphasis on that, that we measure it in ways that we can be sure that the students do indeed have, have grasp of that concept. So why use multiple measures? We have three points up there. The first one is to verify, and we've talked about that a little bit. It's important to use multiple measures to verify the results. We don't want to put what we refer to as all of our eggs in one basket, assuming that the one measure that we use is the end-all, be-all. We want to continually verify those results. Secondly, and I feel honestly most importantly, is to guide the instructional practices for individuals or groups of students. And when we talk about this, one thing to keep in mind is this is for all learners. So when we have a goal and we're measuring toward that goal, we need to make sure that students that are struggling to meet that goal, we're focusing on them to make sure that we give them every opportunity to meet that goal. And also the students that are meeting or exceeding that goal, that we're still allowing them the opportunity to enhance their learning as well. And then the final point there is to include data related to four different areas. We think about student learning data as the primary, and that obviously is the most important piece of information that we would collect data on. But also, it's important to look at some demographic and disaggregated data. And what we mean by that is, again, looking at those subgroups to ensure that all of our students are learning. And then observational and perceptual data. And this simply means that teachers and all staff are constantly observing, talking to, and learning along with their students. It's important to include that data, so it's not all assessment or test-driven data. The professional judgment of our educators has to play into this process as well. And then finally, you see school process data. This refers to the, the way we do business in a school. We need to make sure that we're collecting data to say, to make sure that we are doing indeed what we say we set out to do. We ensure this in many ways through our, our guarantees that we have established at, at all levels in, in different ways. So some examples of multiple measures in Hudson. As I said earlier, multiple measures, the way we are really thinking about them at this point is that idea of verification. Not that we're not touching in all the other areas, but this concept of verification is very important to us. So at the elementary, you've been hearing for quite a few years about the elementary literacy goal. And you've heard lots of acronyms again, the DRA, the FONDAS and PANEL, which we often refer to as the FNP. And then those are our primary measures. We need to verify those results. And with the younger students, we use the DIBBLES assessment for that. And with our intermediate grades, we use the NWEA MAP data to verify those results. At the middle school, you'll see a little switch here that the NWEA MAP data becomes the primary measure. And then one example of a verification, verification data point would be the DRP, which is the Degrees of Reading Progress Assessment that has been used now for the last two years at the middle school. And at the high school, varied goals. So some primary measures, AP data and the scores. And then we also use verification data points with student and teacher perceptual data. And you've heard Ms. Love share some of that data in the past. Now on to another acronym, and it's a very important acronym in our business, RTI, Response to Intervention. Response to Intervention is not only important in Hudson, it's important at the state and it's important at the federal level. It's an initiative that is federally mandated, but also has some specific state implications as well as implications for our district. But this, it's a very good example of an initiative that if we invest in, it will benefit all learners once again. And a brief definition would be, Response to Intervention is really a process that emphasizes how students respond to changes in instruction. And those data points there, or the bullet points, rather, one key point is Response to Intervention requires that the instruction and interventions we use are research-based. Secondly, it, it guarantees that we progress monitor, or we're continually looking at student progress and monitoring that progress and measuring it along the way, so we don't lose sight of the goal. And then the, the third point, a very important one, it allows for decision-making framework that allows us to make instructional decisions based on the data that we take in. Something that's important to understand about Response to Intervention is it's not a special ed initiative and it's not just a general education initiative, initiative. It really is shared between those two departments. And we have several examples of ways we ensure that it is indeed shared. And interestingly, if you look at the connection between SMART goal and Response to Intervention, the way I like to think of it is Response to Intervention provides a framework for the way we do business, and the SMART goal provides the focus within that framework. And you'll be hearing a lot more about Response to Intervention in the future. And now I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Love as she talks more specifically about the high school goals.
I think you'll see the three goals on separate slides in front of you. And I want you to know that at the School Improvement Team training, the teachers broke down into small groups, came up with these goals, and then we took them back to the whole staff who examined the goals and tweaked the goals. So every one of our staff faculty members had input into the three goals that we have before you. The first goal is based on an initiative we began last year because of the research on providing quality feedback to students, improving learning, hopefully at a rate of 74% or better, meaning that if they're provided with quality feedback, 74% gains in learning will occur. Last year when we surveyed our students, we had approximately, well, between 49% and 62% response on this question. And we break down our student body into the four grade levels and then females and males separately. So out of eight groups, we had a response between 49 and 62%. But this coming year, by June 2012, we hope that, we intend that 67% of our ninth through 12th grade students will indicate they are receiving quality feedback that improves their learning as reported on a spring student survey. We'll do that in May. We're actually gathering baseline data from our freshmen in a couple of weeks. So we have data from last year on the rest of the grades and we intend that our average will be 67% by the end of this year. The next goal is related to our High School Learning for the Future learning initiatives, and this one directly connected to our freshman advisory. By June 2012, 90% of our high school freshmen will meet the following indicators of success, which, which will then indicate that our transition supports for students are working. 95% attendance or better from the class. They will earn a minimum of six credits and be on track for graduation, which I guess those two things are technically equal. And 90% of our freshmen will report a positive connection with at least one staff member at Hudson High School. In this past year, again, just looking at last year's freshmen, the numbers of positive connection weren't terribly low, but they weren't as high as the upper grade levels. They hovered around 58% of someone who really knows me well that I can talk to. And so that's the kind of way we ask the question about a positive connection with at least one staff member. And the third goal related to AP, we've changed it up a little bit. Some of the actions under it are similar to last year, but we really want to focus on every student in AP taking the test. Because part of the goal is really challenging yourself at the college level. Not all of our students who took the AP course last year took the test. So we would like to see not just an increase in number of students taking the course, but a 10% increase in the total number of students taking the exams in May. And then at, at minimum, they will score as well or better than all the students who took it in the past. Typically, if you have more students taking the exam and those students aren't as confident, the scores may go down. But our goal is that the, the minimum would be as well as we did last year or better. So the actions in the next slide, that we believe, these are just a couple quick summary points of the actions that we believe will help us achieve those goals. And certainly several detailed action plans behind most of these. The first one, we have been working diligently to define feedback and the various types of feedback to students that we want them to, to use. So it's, it's not just teachers writing feedback on a, on an essay, for example, but it's providing upfront feedback with what we expect the students to learn. It's providing rubrics so that the students themselves can go back and look at what they've demonstrated and see where they're at in their learning and all kinds of feedback. So we're defining it for them and then we're using multiple forms of feedback. Implementing freshman advisories, as you know, this year is a, was a huge initiative. Every freshman is in an advisory that they'll be in for the next four years. And there's a curriculum behind all of that that's connected to the Search Institute that's related to positive transition to high school. Regular communication from teachers and counselors to students to encourage AP advanced placement participation. And behind some of that is the next bullet point. Looking at our students, all of our sophomores took the PLAN test this year. That's an ACT prep-type exam. We want to see how our students scored and then appropriately encourage students who should be in AP courses to take those AP courses. So increasing the number of students considering AP courses. And then also, in the classes where AP teachers are instructing, obviously preparing the students for the AP exam and then really almost hounding the students to take that May exam because it can't really hurt them to take the exam. And we have some measures or some fallbacks for students, say, who can't afford the exam because there is a small cost to the exam. So just really encouraging kids to consider all possibilities for taking that exam.
Now we'll pass it to Mr. Coke to share about the goals at the middle school.
Thank you. The, the SMART goal at the middle school this year has taken on another dimension. This is a building-wide SMART goal, which involves every department and every instructor that we have in the building with a focus on, on reading. Part of the rationale for us moving forward in this area is we really wanted to dovetail and build upon the literacy initiative that has been going on in the elementaries for quite some time. And we wanted to continue that growth and development through the middle-level years. So we focused on a goal to increase the percentage of students who meet or exceed their growth. So we focused on a goal to increase the percentage of students who meet or exceed their growth target goal on the reading NWA test from 58 to 63%, as measured on the spring test. Now, what we're talking about there is the number of students. Well, let me back up and say, every student has a growth target as a result of the baseline, okay? The baseline test that occurs in the, for us now, it's the one we just took here in the fall. What we're trying to identify is how many of our students actually meet that growth target or exceed that growth target. And it's important to understand that we have some students who are performing at a very high level right now, who in the process may have a, let's say, they start with a RIT score that is maybe just in the 240s. Now, that doesn't mean a whole lot to you right now as I'm talking about, but my point is this, they may have a RIT score or a goal, or a target that says they need to grow by five points. Okay, so from 243 to 248. In the past, what we have recognized is some of those students who are very capable have not actually reached the growth target, but their current level of performance is actually quite high. So what we're trying to do is establish a situation whereby all of our students, regardless of where they are in the learning continuum, will demonstrate progress toward that growth target. It'll be very interesting for us to see to what degree we can actually move that total percentage, you know, up for success for those students. The, as I said, it's a building-wide goal. We have all departments and all teachers involved, with one exception, we have exempted physical education. They have a different SMART Goal process that they're involved in right now. As far as the focused action is concerned on this, we are also dovetailing, again, with what has emerged from the elementary in terms of daily free reading, bringing a book to every class, you know, every day. And some school-wide initiatives, what we're trying to accomplish there is reestablishing the atmosphere, the aura in the building that supports students' reading and encourages them to read. We're using 15 minutes, the first 15 minutes of our PATs. Now, I have to tell you that we negotiated quite a bit, because our PATs are an extraordinarily important part of what we do every day in our building. But we felt this goal was significant enough and important enough that we devoted the first 15 minutes to students actually reading, free reading in their classes in the PAT, and then, starting the PAT, students working on whatever subject areas that they want to focus on. The, there are certain school-wide initiatives, as most of you know, any kind of competition that you create at the middle school is greeted warmly and enthusiastically by our kids, whether it's by house or by grade level or whatever. We have a number of things that we're laying out there to try to just motivate and inspire and encourage kids to go ahead and participate in the reading process. More importantly, we have students tracking their individual progress. And what's happening here is that students, based on their test results, students will be conferencing with their teachers, setting goals, and then, tracking their progress as they work through the series of tests that we have. Example would be this, we have our baseline testing that we've done in the fall. A reading strategy has been developed as a result of information we have there, and the staff has been in-serviced with respect to applying that particular reading strategy. We will go through that strategy for a while. We'll do a dipstick test, a quick measure, later in the fall, and find out what kind of progress we're making. And then, as a result of that, we may add an additional strategy, a different strategy. And our second test then occurs in the winter. And then, we'll do the same thing again through the winter. There'll be another strategy, there'll be a dipstick assessment, another strategy, and then, we'll have our final assessment in the spring. And that test of the last bullet that we have in terms of reading strategies, a variety of those. The simplest one we just did, yet very, very effective, a magnet words, magnet summaries as a strategy and a technique that can be utilized in class, you know, by the students. It also becomes a technique that improves professional practice, because teachers utilize that particular strategy with their students in the classes as they move through. So we're pleased with the goal that we've chosen. We have a very dedicated committee working on this. We have building-wide acceptance of this, and that's one of the key factors that we were trying to build upon here. There was no real debate or a negative discussion associated with it. Everyone recognized the value and the merit of continuing the efforts as they emerge from the elementary in this effort to continue reading progress for our kids.
Thank you. And in just a moment, we're going to invite our elementary principals, up for three of them, to share their elementary goals. But I just, I want to take this opportunity to make a point of clarification that really illustrates this idea of multiple measures. There's a contrast between the goal that, there are goals we've heard about at the high school and the goals we heard about at the middle school. And the middle school goal is quite unique in that it's talking about the idea of growth targets. And as Mr. Koch said, those can't really be compared to what we would call a proficiency target, meaning we want all students to reach a certain level of proficiency. This goal deals with specific targets that are unique to each and every student, depending on how they scored and what grade they're at. And actually, at the, when you're at the percentage that they're currently at the middle school, they're already well above average. So even though this is a direct connection to the work that's happened at the elementary level, the goals really can't be compared numerically, because we're talking about proficiency level versus a growth target level.
Can I, are there any questions for Laura or Dan? All right. Thank you for sharing, and we look forward to your report next year.
All righty, now, Mr. Schmidt, Mrs. Mitchell, and Mrs. Schumaker will be coming up.
Mr. Grambo, while we're waiting for this other group to come up, just a question regarding, as I look at, you know, the goals at the high school, the middle school, and I'm sure it's going to be the same case at the elementary school, I'm wondering, at what point in time do we bring the parents into this? Because they're an instrumental role in helping, you know, students, as well as the schools, you know, attain these goals. But if they're not aware of what we're trying to achieve here, you know, it may make the process a little more challenging. So can you talk a little bit about that point?
Absolutely. That's a great question. Yeah, the parents play a very pivotal role in the SMART Goal process. And there are various mechanisms that go into place to allow them to be involved in the process. One thing is, the parent-teacher conference provides that one-on-one opportunity for a teacher to discuss specific goals, not these global goals. They wouldn't obviously talk about percentage goals, but they would talk about the work that the individual student has to do to reach their own personal goals. Also, there, through the parent-teacher organizations and the parent groups, there's communication that happens on a regular basis that then is filtered out to the parents that may not be able to attend those meetings, as well as the newsletters that the principals write on a regular basis. So it happens in different ways, and it really is dependent at what, at what point in the goal process each school is. As an example, many of the goals at the, or the primary goal at the elementary school has been a continuing goal for several years. The communication with parents is going to happen differently. In fact, the parents are not only involved, not only communicated with, but they're brought right into the process, where parent volunteers are involved in work that actually supports the process toward the goal. When you have an initial goal, and it hasn't been explored at any given level, the level of involvement with the parents would be a little bit different. But what we're looking for is creating these goals that can be tracked year after year, and then, that allows us to pull the parents in at a greater degree.
Just last night at Holton's HPA meeting, we reviewed every grade level SMART Goals. That was a way that we make them aware so that they can support it, and they are tremendously supportive. Historically, the elementary level district-wide SMART Goal, as Dave indicated, has been measuring reading at or above grade level, K through five. And just to refresh your memory, in case you haven't remembered, our SMART Goal results in the past four years, in '07-'08, we were at 79% approximately of students reading at or above grade level. '08-'09, sorry, eat the mic. In '08-'09, 83% of students reading at or above grade level, '09-'10, 86%. And last year, 88%. This year, you can see we're aiming for 90% of all learners reading at or above grade level. The common assessment is what Dave had referred to earlier as the developmental reading assessment, fondly referred to as DRA, and Fanta's and Pennell, FNP. An example of the multiple measures that Dave referenced in the beginning of this presentation comes from Holton, where our third, fourth, and fifth grade teams reviewed NWEA MAP assessment data for the last two to three years, and noticed, relatively speaking, an area that could use some focus was word meaning and context. Knowing we had quite a few high-level readers that would be able to show a greater depth of understanding if they had greater background knowledge and more exposure to, for example, Greek and Latin roots and suffixes, the fifth grade team started that initiative by implementing those kinds of things in their instruction. We anticipate that that focus on word meaning and the book study that they're engaged in as a team this year, the strategies that they're implementing in collaboration with the instructional coach, Lori Begging, will strengthen not only our students, 95% of third, fourth, and fifth graders reading at or above grade level, but reading with a deeper understanding. I think one of the things that Dave had mentioned was that that importance of distinguishing between proficiency and growth targets. And it is tricky when you're looking at growth targets, especially nationally-normed growth targets. It's a balanced assessment that can really look at both proficiency and growth and do it really validly. And that's what we're striving to do. So part of their measure is 60% or greater of students meeting or exceeding their growth target. That's the lowest percentage, when you think about all these SMART Goals. But on a nationally-normed assessment, that's about 85% of people nationwide are not able to do that. That beats those people. So that's the target for their little, it's a measure underneath a measure underneath the DRA results.
So one of the things to think about is that every grade level sets their own SMART Goal. Thank you, Mary. Every grade level sets their own SMART Goal, and that contributes to the building-wide SMART Goal, which contributes to the district-wide elementary goal. So we have our own teachers at their own grade level setting their own goals based on their perceptual data that Dave talked about earlier, as well as actual data over time. So another area that Willow River is focusing on is pre-reading strategies at our fifth grade. One of the things that our fifth grade teachers had noticed is that as text became more complex, students were not using pre-reading strategies. If you think about when you read something out of Time or something out of Newsweek, generally, you're going to look at the labels, you're going to look at the photos, you're going to look at bar graphs, that sort of thing. And so, these are examples of all pre-reading strategies that actually increase comprehension. That's an example of a grade level SMART Goal at Willow. Now, Dolph is going to talk about actions.
As a district elementary team, we have certain actions that will be taking place in all the buildings. Actually, both Ann and Peg really did start talking about our first action, which is just teachers deepening their understanding of how to personalize and differentiate reading strategies. And they're specifically talking about two grade levels. One was vocabulary, and one was comprehension. But those are two of the five areas that we really focus on. And the other three are phonemic awareness, being able to hear the sounds that make up words. And so, for example, my three-year-old daughter, that's the piece I'm working with her on right now. It's the rhyming, it's being able to identify the sound that goes with the letter. So that's phonemic awareness. The other piece is phonics, being able really to sound out and decode words, as well as fluency, being able to read passages in a smooth manner. So those are the five pieces that make, really make up the areas that teachers are focusing in on. And we've spent a lot of time in the last few years really honing our skills in those areas. This past summer and fall, Sandy has been working with our reading teachers to come up with some more practices, strategies, techniques to be used in each one of those areas, whether it's within our core reading instruction and Rehears workshop, or used in our other tiers, our Tier Two, which would be our target time, to help our teachers out. I want to give you kind of one example of how on an individual student level, this differentiation can also happen. And I'll give you an example focusing on the area of comprehension. So we have a primary student in our building who reads very, very fluently. So if you would sit down with this child, and he or she would read with you, you'd think, boy, this student really understands what he is reading. But if you would ask him questions, you'd find out very quickly that the child is, his issue within those five is comprehension. And so, the personalized instruction for this child is that he reads a page, and then, he responds orally to that page, as well as answering some questions. And responding is a really high-impact strategy. But that is just an example of how teachers are really personalizing what the child's need is within the core instruction for all students. Now, we know that 80% of our kiddos will get it within our Rehears workshop format, and we know up to 15% is going to need something more. And that's our next action. We've purchased and we're implementing some Tier Two interventions, and they're nationally-researched interventions that will specifically target an area or areas of need for certain children. And they've been proven to be effective. And so, that's a piece that we're really excited about, to have these really nationally-researched interventions that we're going to be able to implement. Also, with our K-5 program, we have a new curriculum that will have Common Language and Strategies, using Quality Read Alouds to work on many lessons regarding comprehension. And so, that's happening in all of our buildings. And also, we're excited that, last year, we had an action research, and we worked with UWRF to kind of compile our results, but we actually tried out some different phonics programs, took in student data, and we were able to come up with the one that was the most effective in our district. And so, we're implementing that not only at the first grade level, but also at the kindergarten level for that area of phonics. And finally, as a principal team, you know, we collect data as the year goes by, and we use that, and we sit down with our classroom teachers. But we also have a professional learning community as principals, where we come together, where we problem solve, and where we look at the next steps that we'll take at each one of our buildings. So that's our last kind of action step as an elementary principal team.
Each year, we start the year with a theme, and we always have a tagline for that theme. And this year, that theme was embracing the passion. And what that theme was all about was highlighting and recognizing the passion that our staff and teachers have for student learning, and the way they demonstrate that in a variety of ways. And the SMART Goals really are an offshoot of that. There are two quotes up here, and I thought when looking at them, when looked at together, they really illustrate this idea of passion for learning. So the first one, I won't read the second, it's a little bit long, but the first one is interesting. Education is not filling of the bucket, but lighting of the fire. And if that doesn't speak to embracing the passion, I don't know what does. That really, that sends that message, that that's really what we're all here to do. And that's what we wanted to recognize with our teachers and staff that do an excellent job of that every day. And then, we get to that idea of measurement. And there's an old adage, and when looked at in two different ways illustrates this point. And one is that you treasure what you measure. And the idea there is you end up placing value on that which you measure, which is true. But if you flip that around, you must measure what you treasure. It speaks to that SMART Goal process. We have very high priorities, and our highest priority is on student learning. So we have multiple ways that we measure our progress toward that student learning. And really, what that does in many ways, it honors that passion that we all have and all of our staff have for the learning process. So with that, I will entertain any questions you may have.
Pat. I noticed, have you been doing the, let's see, with the Greek and Latin roots? Is this something new this year, or have you been implementing that?
The fifth grade team at Holton started it last year. They noticed the NWEA MAP assessment included, for higher-level readers in particular, included a lot of questions with Greek and Latin roots. So they decided to start implementing some of it in their instruction.
I think that's a great idea.
Other questions? No? All right, well, thank.
Just, actually, just real quick, I'm sorry, I was scribbling some notes. Not doodling, notes. Just kind of, I guess I just wanted to really, you know, thank all our teachers and administrators. I just think it's a very courageous effort, you know, these SMART Goals. We're always, we demand so much of our educators and always ask them for accountability. But it really takes, I think, a lot of courage, putting these hard numbers down on paper. And, I mean, I think some of these, especially when you're already at relatively high level, you really have challenged yourselves, and I can see that. And I just really, I want to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sandy, the next report, 2010-11 ACT, AP, and MAP test results.
Yes, thank you. To complement the discussion that we just had regarding multiple measures, I will be sharing the spring 2011 results of three of our key assessments, the MAP, or Measures of Academic Progress, ACT, and our Advanced Placement results. of Academic Progress, ACT, and our Advanced Placement results. First slide. Hudson, of course, wants all of our staff to be assessment literate. And gurus in the field of assessment define assessment literacy as being skilled in gathering accurate information about students' learning, and to be skilled in using that accurate information effectively to promote further learning. Another expert states that teachers need to learn to look at assessment data and then work with other teachers to create action plans that will lead to improved performance. As you can see from those two statements, one is that we need both assessment and learning, as well as collaboration as key components of improved learning. Tonight, we'll examine some of those key, large-scale assessment results. The first one is Northwest Evaluation Association, or NWA's Measures of Academic Progress, and we often refer to it as the MAP Assessment. The MAP Assessment is an achievement test that measures general knowledge in reading, language usage, and math. It is an adaptive, computerized assessment that provides information on academic growth, as you heard through the SMART goals, as well as student learning. The next slide shares why we use our MAP results. Oh, I just lost my spot. Why we use MAPs. One is to know students, so we can look at their individual areas of need. Two is to guide instruction, again, helping students set goals and for teachers to focus their lessons. And three, to report progress, again, looking at that student growth, grade level, and the school progress. Reading and math assessments are administered to all students in grades two through nine in both the fall and spring. Tonight's data displays the median spring-to-spring score for each grade level over our seven years of testing. A RIT score is an equal interval score, sort of like feet and inches. I think I've mentioned that before. So you're always looking for just that little bit of growth again over time, sort of like a steps. So it's possible to follow a student or grade level's educational growth from year to year. The next slide shows results in reading, where we see a slight increase in the median scores in fourth and fifth grade. And in the next slide, slide increases in sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth. If we could draw some trend lines, we'd see from the start in '05 to '11, we'd have upward trend lines. And in the next slide, we see the math results, where again, we see a slight increase in median scores over time in all grades two through five. And in the next slide, again, nice gains in scores in sixth, seventh, eighth, and nine. With the MAP results, we have made two improvement processes over, from our time, this time last year. One, we're assessing students in grades two through nine in both the fall and spring at the secondary level. That tended to be only in the spring. And through fall-to-spring assessing, teachers and students then can see the impact that they have on learning. In most grades this year, we will also be conducting some winter testing as well. It may be with just a small number of students, but again, to help us know where we are going over time and to assist us in formulating instruction. And this also aligns, as Dave mentioned, with RTI requirements of fall, winter, and spring testing. And then two, to assist our improvement efforts, a teaching, learning, and assessment committee was formed just last winter. Each building has teacher representatives on the committee, which is being led by Learning Services Assessment Coordinator, Ann Mitchell. We began by focusing on building teacher leadership in the area of assessment. Teachers received three days of training last year on the NWA Assessment, specifically what the data could tell us as a district, as a building, and as a teacher. This will assist us in our efforts to drive improvement down to the student level, with students setting personal goals and focusing on what they need to do also in the learning process. The committee is already meeting next week to review district and building data, fall data, and it's making plans to assist with the October 20 Professional Development Day that is focused on data. We're calling it our Data Day to help us guide instructional decisions. The next slide, the next assessment we'll be sharing tonight is the ACT. The ACT is a curriculum-based measure of college readiness required by many universities for entrance. As you can see in the chart, the district's composite score came back up to 23.7 this past spring. In the next slide, we see a comparison of districts in the Big Rivers Conference, with Hudson ranking in the top with their composite score, and second in the ranking for percentage of students tested. We then have our other two benchmarks that we've been using the past few years. First, next slide, please, Diane. First, we have that of high-performing districts of comparable size. So you can see, again, when we pull out Wisconsin districts of comparable size, Hudson is ranking top with their composite score and near the top with their percentage tested. And then our next slide, we again are comparing not only with just high-performing districts, but the highest performing districts in the state. And here, we continue to strive to move up that ladder, and we'll continue with our efforts to make that happen. In the area of ACT, we're also looking for ways to improve. Leadership is again looking for ways to make those scores stay solid. A decision was made to administer, as Laura mentioned, with part of the SMART goals, to administer the plan assessment to all of our 10th graders just this past October 5th. In the past, it was an optional assessment for students. But as we're looking for ways to plan for ACT, the plan gives us like a pre-ACT score so that we can look for ways to intervene and make sure that students aren't on track, both from the teacher's side, looking at curriculum alignment, as well as meeting with students and discussing what they're doing as far as course planning, to also ensure that they're ready for that ACT test in the 11th grade. Leadership of the district also has attended some sessions on the ACT specifically, and are looking for ideas that were generated from those workshops, and again, ways that we can make stronger moves to hold those ATC scores where they are and increase over time. The third assessment we'll share this evening is the Advanced Placement results. The Advanced Placement program enables students to pursue college-level studies while still in high school. Currently, Hudson offers thirteen AP courses. The first slide shows our continued improvement in the number of students taking AP, the number of exams being taken, and the number of scores at three or above. A score of three or higher has been shown through research to be a strong predictor of college success, as well as college graduation. The next slide pulls that data apart and allows us to focus on those three areas of strength. First, we see the total number of AP students over the past few years, past five years, followed by the number of exams. And you heard tonight that they still have goals to increase this even more. And then the last one, showing the scores of three or higher. A very impressive show in all three areas over those past five years. Through multiple assessment measures, the district results validate our ranking as a high-performing district. The administrative leadership team is looking for additional ways to improve learning and prepare more students for post-secondary success. Thank you, and we're open for questions and comments.
Are there questions for Sandy?
I had, Sandy, have we increased the percentage of our students taking the ACT over time?
No, you're going to make me look. I want to say, hold on, I know I've got this. Mark, I might have to get back to you if I find this out tonight.
That'll be definitely a problem, okay. I noticed that we're significantly above the state average. I was just curious if we had been moving that trend line up as well. But yeah, that'd be, thanks, Sandy.
Any other questions for Sandy? Thank you, Sandy, for sharing that.
You're welcome.
And moving from student learning metrics to financial metrics, Tim, an update on first quarter?
Boy, that's hard to follow. Before you are the first-quarter financials for the district. And just going through this in summary fashion, you're going to see in the General Fund, Special Education Fund, the Food Service Fund, Community Service and Extended Daycare, or the School Age Care Fund, we are ahead of expenditures when you compare percentages to the previous two years. And there's really a pretty simple explanation for that. We just happen to have more payrolls in that period, in this first quarter than we did in the previous two years. So over time, you'll see that difference decrease. One of the other highlights in looking at this is if you look at the Debt Service Fund, that's 39, and that's voter-approved debt service, you'll see we've got a large expenditure, $11.6 million, eighty-two percent of our budgeted expenditures. And that's really due to the refinancing that was done in July. We've made the payment now on that refinancing. So that shows up as, again, a budgeted expenditure, but shows up in the first quarter here. Other than that, pretty unremarkable, we're tracking in all of our other areas. Moving on to page two. Again, the numbers just generated in a graph form, and you can see salaries fringe again. Those are ahead due to that extra payroll. So any questions on page two or page one? Okay, moving on to page three. It gives the breakdown, again, and these are by object, and you can see, without going into a lot of detail, you can see the differences. I don't have a lot to comment on. They're mainly tracking pretty normally. We've got some expenditures that have different timings associated with them, some expenditures, such as under the non-capital objects. We had some expenditures come in a little bit earlier than they normally do falling in the first quarter. But again, all planned and within budget. And then the last page is revenue by fund. And again, probably highlighting, under Special Revenue Trust Fund, those are private, non-public grants. And, you know, because of the economy, we are, that's an area that we are down in, and we did reduce that budget. Those budgeted revenues are reduced down to reflect that. We're certainly behind last year in the collection of that revenue. We're about six percent compared to 33 and 64 in previous years. And again, that's due to some timing. There's a Project Lead the Way grant that will be much smaller this year as compared to the previous two years. But again, those are budgeted and projected for. And again, under Debt Service, you'll see that larger revenue number of $9.6 million, and that's again, the dollars coming in for the new refinancing on the bond. So any questions?
No? Thanks, Tim. All right, we do have, it looks like at least one citizen request to speak. All right, we have a request. Angelique Kalotescu. If you'll come forward to the microphone, Angelique, and state your name and address for the record, and then address your question.
Certainly. Good evening. Angie Kalotescu, 116 Bridgewater Trail. I am in the Hudson School District. My question is just out of curiosity for approach, and I think it goes to Mr. Grahambow, I believe. In one of the four parameters for looking at the data for measurement, looking at the demographics and also disaggregate data was mentioned in order to ensure that all students were learning. I'm just curious, is that looking at an achievement gap, or does that mean something else?
That's a great question. That is one of the things that we're always monitoring to ensure that if there is indeed an achievement gap, we're addressing it. But there are several other facets that we'll continually look at, demographics and disaggregated data. So really, part of it is an open-ended look. We look to see what the data offers us, and we make the decisions based on that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Angie. And I think that is the end of the citizen's request to speak. So now we are moving into topics for action. The first item on that section of the agenda is new policy, student use or possession of electronic communication devices and lasers, actually, a revised policy. Nancy?
The policy on student use or possession of electronic communication devices was first adopted by the board in 1990. And actually, at that time, there was a state law that required every school board to adopt such a policy, and also a requirement that cell phones specifically would be prohibited in school, use or possession. And since 1990, the policy has been revised by the board three times, and so this is the fourth proposed revision. This revision is on the agenda as a separate action item for two reasons. One is that there was no opportunity for a board committee review. And secondly, the content of the revision may be of general public interest, sufficient, you know, for a discussion, a specific discussion. And the need for the revision was initially brought forward by Learning Services Director Sandy Kovach and High School Principal Laura Love because of their work with HSD 2025, including the work around high school learning of the future. The request also follows a successful pilot of smartphone use in high school classrooms for special projects. The ITS Coordinator Nancy Toll also contributed to this revision. The policy revision recognizes advances in technology and also recognizes the educational benefits of those advances. At the same time, the revision maintains earlier content regarding the special and significant concerns that personal communication devices can present in the educational setting. The revision goes on to differentiate possession and use of personal communication devices by elementary and middle school students from that of high school students premised on greater maturity. And in the first way, such possession use is still prohibited, and at the elementary and middle school during the school day, except to be housed in school lockers. And the policy still contains special provisions for principal preapproval under special circumstances. The specific reference to the high school merits some literal reading, but students at the high school, a reading from the new language in the policy now, students at the high school level shall be permitted to possess personal communication devices at school. However, use of those devices is limited to before and after school, in areas designated by the principal or designee, at lunchtime, in areas designated by the principal or designee, during passing time, in areas designated by the principal or designee, and for preapproved learning activities during class time. The revision maintains notice of the right for the principal or designee to confiscate and search the communication device whenever there is reasonable suspicion that the student has violated the law, school rule, and/or policy, and beliefs that a search will produce evidence of that violation. So that's not new content, that's continuing content and notice to the student and the student's parent. And finally, the policy adds language that the district is not liable for personal communication devices that are lost or damaged. Sandy, Laura, and I would be available for any questions that board members may have.
Are there any questions? Dan?
Nancy, just to...
Nancy, just a, I'm reading under the middle school, and it's just an awkward sentence, I think. In the second paragraph, it says the principal or designee, however, is authorized to provide written permission for a student to use it. So you're saying that the principal is authorized to provide the written, is that upon request? They can?
Yes, and specifically, that would be the documentation of the principal's preapproval at the middle and elementary level. And the examples are if there is a need, a medical need, for the possession of a communication device, or some educational need or other legitimate use. It really, this policy does designate the principal as having that authority to give that written permission at the elementary and middle level.
Okay, but there has to be a request made before they provide the?
Right.
Any requests for the parent?
Yeah, generally, the request would come forward by the parent.
Okay, thank you.
We'll look at that for the awkwardness of it. It doesn't read well, you're thinking? Okay. We'll consider that further. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Nancy? I was just going to add that in the 2010-11 school year, Principal Love came to the Learning and Program Development Committee requesting permission to pilot the use of cellphones as an educational tool in some classrooms, a select group of classrooms. And we will be meeting again as a committee, and we'll hear from Principal Love some of the specific outcomes of that. But clearly, it's been a success, and so we want to codify the use of those in the policy, which previously had prohibited their use in the school, so.
It's a clear example of how times have changed and how the organization needs to be flexible.
Thanks, Nancy. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this revision to the policy.
So move.
Motion by Tom. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Pat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we are in the consent agenda items. If there is someone who would be willing to make the motion, reading the language authorizing Tim Erickson to pay bills, which should be attached to your agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,890,390.19.
And the remaining consent agenda items as well?
As well, yeah, thank you.
Motion by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda items are approved. Committee reports are next on the agenda, and the first committee report, or committee chair that we will hear from is Tom Holland for Facilities and Grounds.
Our Facilities and Grounds, excuse me, Facilities and Grounds Committee met on September 26th last. We had two brief agenda items. One was a closed session regarding the deliberation of purchase of public property, much of which you've heard tonight already. The second item was a general initial discussion around the potential for collaboration with the St. Croix County. There's just, there's no, there's no specific agenda around this. It's just some preliminary discussions around the potentials for sharing services. There's new leadership in the county, and therefore, maybe some opportunity to look at those, some options. And so I guess I really don't have anything specific, other than to say that there are some preliminary discussions about that, which might benefit, hopefully benefit, the district as well as the county, so I'll leave it at that.
That's great. Questions for Tom? All right, hearing none. Personnel Committee, Mark.
Thank you, Barb. Personnel Committee also met Monday, September 26th. One of the items on our agenda, Nancy Sweet provided us, were the updates to the revision to our possession or use of weapons policy. That was, we talked about, I think, at a previous board meeting, and was approved here on the consent agenda tonight. Nancy also had an update for us on our student-teacher ratios relative to our class-size guidelines. I guess the only comment I'll make on that is while we're doing very good, I think, overall, keeping our class-size guidelines balanced, there certainly are challenges in a lot of the core classes in the secondary area, and just always would remind everyone, too, that we still have quite a few teachers on carts. So our secondary space is certainly really being, you know, being quite taxed. And just, I know that Superintendent Mary Bone-Eggbard made the statement earlier about, you know, our building capacities, and those are ideal numbers when all the students are in all the right places, and you don't really function at 100%. It's, in a sense, sort of a hypothetical capacity, so something always to keep in mind. I think something in the, you know, 85 to 90% capacity is really considered to be sort of full for reasonable operational purposes. Then we just talked about some staffing for noon duty supervision over at the middle school. This is in support of the new duties for Mr. Jim Delune. And then also some issues regarding the communications support for a possible referendum in the spring. And we had no closed session. A rarity.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions? All right. Well, board members, we are at the end of our agenda, and we have no closed session this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
On behalf of Brian Bell, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dan. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Pat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?